Ms. Colbert.
Here.
Ms. Grab Mallard.
Here.
Mayor Keough.
President. Item C is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council work session on July 8th, as well as our regular city council meeting on July 8th.
Moved by Smith.
Thank you.
Second?
Second by Fisher.
I was here, so I don't want to second.
Fair enough. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Mr. Fisher, how about some of the minutes?
Yes, on page one, under C. Down where it says "Other items discussed," fire station design and expectations. I'd like to see after the word "design" add the word "consultant." Because we weren't actually talking about the design. And then on page six, which would be the regular meeting minutes, under L2, the bid to contractor for the pedestrian safety project. I believe my motion was not to exceed figure of $234,000, and that was per the July memo that we received at the meeting.
Okay. So we have a couple of friendly amendments. Just make sure those are okay. Anything else, Jim? Ms. Fisher, anything you know? Other council members? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from both the workshop, the work session, and the regular city council meeting, if I'm saying aye, please?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approve the minutes. We have two items of pre-arranged participation, two people that have asked to speak. First this evening is Mr. Dale Fisher. Welcome. Please stand.
I'm taking a little bit taken aback. I didn't expect the upper this quick. Anyhow, I tell you what I do, and I've been doing for a long time, is I basically fly around and take pictures. And I've been doing that. The Navy treated me during the Korean War to be an airborne spy. Spent my time looking through a hole in the bottom of an airplane. Anyhow, I continued working from the air when I got out of the Navy. Went to work for the Ann Arbor News. Worked there a short time. Started my own business, and I'm not going to go into all the gruesome details, but I, some years ago, decided to do a book on Detroit, and that led to a book on Ann Arbor, another book on southeast Michigan, and I think I've done 11 or 12 full-color hardcover coffee table books. On your table in front of you now, you will see a book on Jackson County. The biggest book that I've done on Ann Arbor is 242 pages. When I started to do a book on Jackson County, it was going to be an 80-page book. Well, it grew due to the fact that there were a lot of good people doing good things in Jackson. It became the biggest book that I've ever done. It's 272 pages. Most of my books have been pretty much helicopter photography. The Jackson book, Jackson was too small, so we decided to do Jackson County. Because of that, it turned into a more people-oriented book. It's much more personal, and it shows a lot more people activity. Now, we decided, we actually started the book, my final book, I'm working on the last book that I'm going to do, unless the governor wants to come along with a half a billion dollars, and then we'll do one on Michigan. Anyway, we decided to change the book that was going to be my last book on Ann Arbor to Washtenaw County. In light of that, we decided to offer each city in Washtenaw County a package. A single sponsor page in any of these books is $6,500. Two pages are $10,000. There will be 15,000 books printed, and the thing that we did with the cities in Washtenaw County, we are offering Dexter the opportunity to participate as a sponsor. Now, each, and the deal there was that you were to help us get five additional sponsors. All that would have amounted to was introducing us to potential sponsors. It's extremely difficult to get past gatekeepers. So that was the key point, is that you would point us to people that might possibly be sponsors. We have a number of, well, I'm going to point out one other thing. This has nothing to do with the book. You'll find in the little rolled-up tube there, picture of the World Trade Center. This was done a long time before they destroyed it. There is a historical picture of the Michigan Stadium before they added much to it. I think this was taken in the '70s, and then a picture of the Statue of Liberty. Anyway, that's what you have in that rolled-up tube.
I'm going to interrupt. I'm Joanne. I'm Dale's fiancee. I'm the graphic designer and the marketing director. I did all the layout work for the Jackson County book. And as he speaks, I don't want to distract your attention, but his photographs that he has today of Dexter are so gorgeous, then I'm just going to hold up some of the pictures so you can listen to them. And we also have two of the, we have the 24 by 36, and then we have a smaller picture over there. So I'm sorry, go ahead, Dale.
The large picture that you see is in high altitude. It takes in most of Dexter and the surrounding area. I don't usually do that kind of work. Most of my work is done from 50 feet to 300 feet off the ground. Anyhow, getting back to the sponsorship, the five sponsors, rather than getting a single page for $6,500, they're going to get two pages for $6,500, which are normally $10,000. The city will buy, and I think that you've already agreed to do this, according to Paul anyway, unless you misled me. The city will get 20 pages. And we have been taking pictures for the last several years, of some of which Joanne will be showing you. The sponsors will also get 17 by 26 canvas print, which is the size of the small picture on the easel right there. They will also get the use of the images that appear in the book. Joanne was looking at your webpages today, and being that she's a designer, she said you could really use some new work, so you will get all of that, all the 20, well, your 20 pages may have more pictures, but you get the use, and then the sponsors get the use of their pictures.
When we, this was a huge benefit. Each one of the photographs that Dale takes or makes, the value of the JPG image is $500 a piece. So there's going to be quite a few pictures that are going to be within those 20 pages that you will be able to use for your website, your brochures, any of the marketing material that you'll be doing. In addition, the sponsor will get their photograph that appears in the book, the use of the JPG images.
This is a mock-up book, and you don't need it. I'm just showing you that that's a custom cover. Anything else that I should have thought about? She says I always forget the most important things, so I'm just asking her.
So the 17 by 26 frame canvas print will be for the city, as well as each one of the sponsors will receive that. In addition, the city and each sponsor will receive 50 of the books. The book is scheduled to make its debut at the Chad Tough fundraiser in May of 2020. That's usually the second week. And the book is scheduled to be given to each of the participants, or attendees, to that fundraiser. And then in June, we will be making the formal distribution to the sponsors and the city.
When she's talking about distribution, the book will be distributed through the sponsors, through bookstores, and also through a national distributor and a Michigan distributor. What else did I forget there?
Oh, my goodness. The books are going to retail for $65. However, we can do pre-sales in advance for $35. So you'll get your 50 books, and then if you want to order. What we also are looking for is events that Dale can take photographs, Dale or one of our representatives, probably Dale. And Dale actually is going to be in the air Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday. And he'll be going around Dexter, he's going to be hitting all the, well, not all the cube communities, but many of the communities that are in the book.
One of the things that I've done, not knowing who occupies the commercial industrial buildings in Dexter, I took some very quick snapshots and identified them. I have no idea of who the people are in these buildings. This is where we need some help from your organization.
So we're, to kind of restate, and this is really huge, because the city of Dexter will get 20 pages in the book, and then editorial pages, and then your sponsors will get double pages, they get two pages for the price of one. So that means that Dexter is going to be represented by 30 pages in this book. Now, this book and this sheet here, this top sheet, is the overview of the project, but the second sheet here really gives the nuts and bolts of the program. And our biggest thing, our biggest fear is that the businesses aren't going to know that this book is coming out, that they have the opportunity to be in the book. We don't want anybody to come up to us after the book is in distribution and say, "I would have been a sponsor." So not, you know, we're also looking to spread the word on the book and to offer the opportunity to the businesses. Now, it is called the City of Dexter, the city sponsorship package, but as long as we have five sponsors from the city of Dexter or Dexter Township, that would apply. And we actually have one right now.
Well, we actually have two, as far as I know. One is the city and the other is...
We need five.
Yeah, well, Benny Osterbach.
No, Benny.
Oh, excuse me. Now you know how old I am. Benny Osterbach was coaching when I got out of the Navy. That was a long time ago. I want to point out one other thing, that, and this is a new edition. I'm not sure how it's going to be because she's the boss, but...
Oh, I didn't tell them about that.
Well, the book will be online as well, and there will probably be the separate section on Dexter online by itself. The other thing about distribution that we support, well, a lot of smaller charities and nonprofits, but we support Ronald McDonald House, the Red Shoe, the Transplant Center, Vita Radita, and the Chad Tough Foundation. Last May, the Chad Tough Foundation had their fundraiser at the Chrysler Arena. They had to cut it down from 1,000 people to 750, but it will probably be back in the Fieldhouse this year, so there will be 1,000 people there. Every person that leaves that event will get a copy of this book, but it will have a custom cover for the Chad Foundation. And there will be a small section on those three major charities.
So the one thing that you highlighted, the digital version, but the digital version is going, there will be one for the city of Dexter, and it'll have its own link, and it's downloadable. So then you can use it for your business development, for your economic development, and your website as well.
So my recollection on this is that six months ago, approximately February, we did approve, I believe approved, the idea of Dexter purchasing a sponsor page.
Okay.
Okay, but it was conditional. It had to be done within like a two-week period, because there was a deadline that was assigned to it. And the gist of it was, I think we were going to ask the chamber or something to help, but we were trying to find five sponsors. So our weak link in this is we have not been able to bring you five people. Now, if you've got Benny Fusiliere or Benny Osterbach, either one.
So that's four, right?
That's one.
Right, so that's four more.
Four more. This council, I think, has been generally supportive of the idea, understanding that the other communities were also trying to do it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, but we have not, we did not feel...
So we've extended, I didn't need to cut you off, I'm sorry. We've extended the deadline for the distribution date until next, well, May and June. And so our deadline for sponsors has been pushed. This is such an important, this is Dale's legacy here, so we do have more time.
My advice to you, if you're trying to market some of the pictures you've taken of buildings that you know, we can tell you who those property owners are.
That's what we need.
And then if you want to talk to them, see if you can come up with five, then we could come back as a board to say there would be action to support it or whatever.
Perfect.
Okay, you know, so if, I don't know, if that's Michelle, or you and Mike, to look at the pictures with Joanne and identify who the people are that they've already photographed, that they might be able to draw film. But I think that's the next step from our perspective, was, right? Am I misstating that?
Okay, perfect. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for giving us the time, but we also wanted to make sure that everybody knew what the project was directly from us, so we appreciate the time.
I don't know, would you give that list, I don't know.
So who, so we're going to meet with Michelle, she's from the chamber, right?
Michelle is right here.
I've got everything here for you.
Okay, all right. Oh, thank you. You are on it. Thank you.
I think that's the most effective way to get you a list of people that if you're going to go on behalf of the book to, you know, to pursue sponsorships, we can give you the list.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a young lady working with us now. She has a business degree from the university, and she will be making the contacts with the potential sponsors.
As well as us, so, thank you. We're going to scooch out of your way.
You're welcome. And you want these books back, right?
No, those are yours to keep.
I'm just giving a second for Dale to clear the pre-arranged participation person to come up. Thank you for coming, Joanne and Mr. Fisher. I appreciate your time. Next up tonight under pre-arranged participation is Jamie Griffin. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience.
I want to begin by thanking you for your time, and so the important work you do with Dexter. I'm here tonight to more formally continue the conversation I started with Mayor Keough at the end of February of this year, with the most recent exchanges taking place in publicly available media, namely the Sun Times News, Change.org, and the mayor's note to city council dated July 8th. I also want to thank everyone who has contributed to this discussion, some of whom are here this evening, particularly community members and representatives from various community and government agencies who have answered my questions or provided additional information. From the beginning, I want to be clear, this has been an information gathering expedition as it were, trying to find answers to questions that I've had. The purpose of this statement is to clarify the intent of the petition to use at Dexter City Council regarding the proposed Avalon housing development at 7651 Dan Hilli Road, and to bring additional information to bear on the ongoing community discussion about the development. Again, because I think it is in the public's interest to at least witness this conversation, a nearly verbatim statement has been submitted as a letter to the editor in the Sun Times News. The petition urges you to reconsider both the need for and location of the proposed development, specifically the support of housing control. Such a reconsideration includes an evidence-based response to the following questions. What is the need for supportive housing in Dexter? To what extent does the proposed development need this need? To what extent do features of the development minimize the burden on existing infrastructure and the potential risks associated with placing those requiring supportive housing in close proximity to schoolchildren? Although Mayor Keough shared his thoughts about the proposed development in his report to city council dated July 8th, his response has not adequately addressed these fundamental questions. His comments, when relevant, are referenced below. I also reference information shared by representatives from Avalon in faith and action at the open house held on July 16th and in personal communications I have had with them. In this discussion, I feel it is important to note the distinction between affordable housing and supportive housing and how placement in each works. Of the 24 units of the proposed development, 12 are designated as affordable and 12 are designated as supportive. Affordable housing is housing for an individual or family that costs less than 30% of the gross annual income. Avalon will randomly select residents for the 12 affordable units from an affirmatively marketed waitlist that they will open. Details about this process have not yet been decided. On the other hand, supportive housing is designated for people who are chronically homeless, as defined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Among the 12 supportive units, five are reserved for veterans with veterans' affairs supportive housing vouchers. The remaining seven units are projected to be reserved for those with vouchers from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Placement in these seven units will be filled by Avalon through referrals from housing access for Washtenaw County or HOC. HOC is the county central intake for those who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, and they maintain a by-name list of individuals and families with supportive housing needs. Notably, people staying with friends or family are not considered chronically homeless, unless do not appear on this list. The need for supportive housing in Dexter remains unclear. Although a representative from the Washtenaw Housing Alliance has indicated that there is an overwhelming need for supportive housing throughout Washtenaw County, the need is not quantified by city or township. Regarding the need in Dexter, Mayor Keough stated, "The reality is that the Dexter community already has people who need some type of supportive help, and many of those people are part of family units that need community support. They may be living with a spouse, a parent, a sibling, or a friend already. However, this need does not meet HUD's definition of chronic homelessness." Further, in a letter addressed to the community, although I'm not sure it has been shared publicly, a representative from faith and action confirmed that at least 12 families in the Dexter community school district are receiving McKinney-Vento funding, where the McKinney-Vento Act is a federal law protecting the rights of homeless children. Importantly, the definition of homeless used by this law is less restrictive than the definition of chronic homelessness used by HOC for placement in supportive housing. That is, a child might be receiving McKinney-Vento funding even though his or her family is not necessarily considered chronically homeless. Although these individuals and families would almost certainly benefit from the addition of affordable housing units, it is not clear that they would be eligible for placement in supportive housing units in the proposed development. Concerns I and others have expressed about the proximity of supportive housing to the Dexter community schools have yet to be addressed. As stated in a report by HUD's Office of Policy Development and Research, "The realities of substance use among homeless people are that, quote, 'The great majority of them, when sheltered, are going to be living in multi-unit buildings in which their ongoing substance use will affect others.'" The report describes some of these effects, including the temptation for use among others in the development working toward recovery, risks for crime and violence associated with drug and alcohol abuse, and changes in behavior, for example, belligerence, noise, or bizarre behavior. Further, that was a quote from them, "Further, as described in HUD's training manual for those providing supportive housing services, the first year of residence in supportive housing is a critical year, in which psychiatric decompensation or breakdown in substance use relapse are the norm, not the exception." Notably, as confirmed by the Washtenaw Housing Alliance, the county ascribes to the housing first approach, "In which placement in supportive housing is not conditional on sobriety or completion of alcohol or drug treatment. Participation in supportive services is voluntary. And alcohol and drug use are only considered least violations when such use results in disturbances to neighbors or is associated with illegal activity. Thus disregarding concerns about the proposed development's location is, in my opinion, naive at best and irresponsible at worst. I can certainly appreciate that these issues are complex and nuanced. However, as our elected officials, it is incumbent upon you to answer these fundamental questions about the need for a particular development and address legitimate concerns about it, particularly because it involves the sale of city-owned land. Although exercising due diligence would most certainly involve conversations with Avalon, simply deferring to spokespeople for a real estate development and property management company who have a vested interest in the closing of a deal is, in my opinion, insufficient. Avalon was not elected to represent Dexter, you were. Further, if your decision to sign the purchase agreement was motivated by a desire to help address the county's broader need for supportive housing rather than a specific need in Dexter, then you should be transparent about that. Residents have a right to know the circumstances surrounding an agreement to sell city-owned land, an agreement that was reached with unprecedented speed and seemingly little resident input." So again, I and 62 others who have signed the petition are asking that we consider both the need for and location of supportive housing, of the supportive housing component of the proposed Avalon development. The first public hearing regarding the pilot ordinance and ordinance regarding payment and lieu taxes is scheduled for August 12th, and the second public hearing regarding the land sales at Avalon is tentatively scheduled for September 9th. Why not hit the pause button and take some time to fully vet the sale of this land for this purpose? Why not give the city's own housing task force, appointed only one month before the purchase agreement was signed, a chance to bring additional information to the table? What if the housing task force were to find that additional affordable housing units, rather than supportive housing units, would actually better serve Dexter's housing needs? Why not fully investigate the impact this development will have on traffic in an area already understudied for improvements to pedestrian safety? Why not take time to properly address resident concerns about the proximity of supportive housing to the schools by bringing more evidence to bear? Why not provide greater clarity about the parameters for eviction and other community standards that will ensure the development has a positive impact on both its residents and the community? Why not take the time to evaluate whether the nearby public transportation and grocery store are convenient and affordable enough to actually meet the needs of residents of the proposed development? If you insist on moving forward at this pace, Dexter residents, yourselves included, will not have an opportunity to weigh the potential trade-offs of this development when making a decision to favor or oppose it. If you think you have fully vetted this sale, then why not take the time to share the facts you have considered with the citizens you represent? Why not make an explicit and methodical effort to gather citizen input that has been informed by all relevant information? Let's take a step back to ensure that all aspects of this development, including its composition of housing types and location, are truly in the best interest of Dexter and the residents you have been elected to represent. Again, I thank you for your time. I look forward to your response and further contribution to the support conversation.
Thank you for coming this evening. Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, on my...
A mic statement?
Yeah.
Yes, certainly. I also do have a copy of the petition, as well as signatures.
Okay. Both would be appreciated.
Would you like me to leave it with...
Just leave it with Michelle right there.
And as we said, that will appear in this research on site, there's documentation that you can, I can type it into it, and I'm happy if somebody emails me if they want any documentation out of this document.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Moving on, item E is approval of the agenda. Nothing, just the page one, the barbell.
Before we go around, like, ask questions.
Okay, moved by Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stipe. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah. Under new business, on number two, it says for an amount not to exceed $100,000. But when you go to page 181, it says not to exceed $99,000. I didn't know which one we should use. And then on...
I think it's about $99,000.
On number three, it says not to exceed $35,000. But then when you go to 187, it says $37,000.
Yeah, sorry. I just missed the most important thing in the agenda. Just go with the motto, not the agenda.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure. So we'll just change that to $99,000 and the other one to $37,000. With those changes.
You got it. Those two. Other comments or questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the agenda, send a flag and say aye please.
Aye.
Thank you. We are down to public hearings if we have none. So we're down to non-arranged participation. This is the first of two spots on the agenda for anyone in the audience to speak on any item they would like. Please step forward, state your name and address at the podium, and you have five minutes.
Great. Hi, my name is Paul Waklansky. I'm at 8499 Park Ridge Drive in Dexter. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes today, my five minutes today, to talk about the latest waste management, trash collection, dumpster distribution that's happened in the city. I think to really break this down into three core areas so I can focus on that. The first is the frustration aspect. The second is the practicality of it, and the third is a call to action. So first of all, I'd start off by saying that frustration bucket, when this project was initially announced, I contacted the city and I spoke with a city employee whose response, I said, "You know, you're going to submit the, you're going to have us transfer our trash cans, 64-gallon, 96-gallon trash containers." I said, "You know, what about offering a smaller size?" And the woman's response was simply that her eight-year-old grandmother can handle pushing a trash can to the street, which my response is, "I'm, this isn't an issue about mobility. This is an issue about space in my garage where you're going to store 96 gallons of trash on a weekly basis." So I also said, "You know, it didn't make any sense to me that you would actually have people distribute these said trash containers, then with an option to follow up to have somebody come back and pick these containers up with a substituted car to get a different size." So I really was unsure as to, I was frustrated by the idea that we're being very inefficient with our resource allocation, when if instead we had the option to determine the size we needed around the gate, it would have been more effective. The second thing that I would say is, is a follow-up. When I returned from vacation and I saw the two 96-gallon containers at the end of my driveway, I contacted Justin in the city office and I told him my opinions and my thoughts about this, to which he then transferred me to, or had me call Pat Greavy at Waste Management. Actually, Pat called me. And my frustration with Pat was quite simply that his attitude is, "Well, too bad. It's the contract. This is the choice. The best choice you have is 64 gallons. Otherwise, you know, or you get, you're stuck with what you have." And I said, "So you mean there's absolutely no opportunity to satisfy a customer or, you know, as a paying citizen?" And he says, "Nope. I don't want to stock them. They're not available, and I don't want to have to deal with the spare parts. Bottom line." I said, "So, I said, "So as a community, so what are my options?" He said, "Well, you can go out and you can buy a 35-gallon toter, but when I, or if I break it, I'm just going to turn around and replace it with a 96-gallon toter anyway." One person in our community has already indicated that when they put their 35-gallon toter out in the initial pickup, it was taken by Waste Management and replaced with a 96-gallon toter. These are $60 apiece, so $120 if you decide to replace these. So you might see that this frustration, that leads to the idea of, you know, Waste Management has zero interest in being customer-focused or community-minded. Multiple people utilizing next door have weighed in on this issue, and I realize it's a small sample size. It's not the 64 names on the previous petition. There have been countless people that all are quite mystified by the idea that we have these rather large dumpster-sized containers as residential use. So further, my understanding is this was done as a labor savings, but it's interesting to me that today, upon observation, the trash people actually still have to get out of their trucks, still manually wheel the dumpster to the front of their truck to have it dumped in mechanically. As of 6:45 this evening, they still have not picked up the trash in their neighborhood. So I'm not exactly sure that this is benefiting the city, which leads me to the practical aspect of this. 96 gallons of trash on a weekly basis. So when you look at the city of Portland, Oregon, as an example, and I have used materials available, the city of Portland, who is also a Waste Management customer, by the way, offers 20, 35, 64, and 96-gallon trash containers. In fact, they indicate on their refuse website that they encourage you to downsize your container. Their criteria is, is if your container is half or three quarters full, you should consider going to the next size lower. And by the way, Pat had indicated on the phone to me that he nor his family are able to fill that container on a weekly basis. So to give that also some context, the city of Portland recommends a 96-gallon container for a family of six on a trash pickup schedule of bi-weekly, twice a month. We're doing 96 gallons for every resident in the city weekly. And with that, the recommended weight for that toter is 175 pounds of trash. That's my body weight. So I would ask you, as a council, whether you or your household actually puts out 175 pounds of trash on a weekly basis.
No.
I'm going to guess no. This is the picture that I have as well. I have a picture of my garbage in my dumpster today, indicating that it fills up less than a third, 11 inches, of the trash at the bottom of a 40-inch container. So we're paying for a lot of empty space, and this also gets back to the frustration of where are we supposed to put these things in the garage? And again, Pat's response was, "That's not my problem, that's yours." So you can see from a practicality perspective, this is a problem. I've also indicated that, my understanding is that condominium communities are eligible for the 35-gallon container. Westridge is a condominium community. So at the very least, my expectation is that the city honor that agreement and offer the 35-gallon containers to the residents of Westridge. We are by definition a condominium community. So finally, I'll wrap up. My call to action is basic. Waste Management indicates that by 8:15 that we return our exchange cards. I think it's reasonable to assume that the city can send an email out to its residents by this Friday, giving its residents time to indicate that they are working with Waste Management to offer 35-gallon sizes to those who request them. The reality is, I know at least 16 people in my community of less than 200 homes that have already said, "I want the smallest container possible." And based on the image that I just saw raised to me, I might count that as 17. The second thing is, I would expect by this Friday that the city communicate to, not only to Waste Management, but also to its citizens that there is downsides available, that we can accommodate this, and that the city at least, at the very least, offer, if they're unwilling to offer, as a community-wide service, that they offer to other condominium communities, such as Westridge, the honor, or honor that contract commitment, because apparently Waste Management is very specific about what they will and will not honor to the letter of their contract, that we are a condominium community. I would like my 35-gallon container. Finally, if necessary, my expectation is that the city go ahead and work to modify that contract agreement, if not during the, not in its current year, then in its second year, because I just feel that as a community, this is quite surprising. And I would, as my final statement, I would just leave you with this. While other communities around the city, around the state, I should say, around the county, the state, and the country are really working with their constituents and their residents to reduce landfill, reduce the volume of waste that we generate as a people, as a country, the city of Dexter in turn is actually promoting an increased volume of trash by supplying people with a vehicle to supply 96 gallons of trash, 175 pounds of landfill material on a weekly basis. I understand you don't comment at these for the unscripted sections, but I do have information available. I'm happy to provide them to whomever would like them, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Paul, if there's anything you want to leave, we'll make sure it's copied and distributed for us to look at.
Yeah. Happy to do it.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? Well, I could ask myself last name, because I didn't get that.
Sure. My last name is Waklansky. It's spelled W-I-K-L-A-N-S-K-I.
Thank you.
My email is easy. It's paul underscore my last name at havel, and I'm at 8499 Park Ridge Drive in Dexter.
Thank you very much.
Come on, coach.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move down to item H, which is our communications. Our two standard communications are in the packet, the upcoming meeting list and side calendar. Are there any questions from council and or comments by staff on two communications? Mr. Cousins?
Well, once again, the Chamber of Commerce changed their date, and it is going to be next Monday, the fifth Monday, don't be late, Courtney, okay? Fifth Monday at 9 o'clock at the Dexter Library, okay?
Are you going to be able to make that?
Yes, after a slight rain, but I can do that, Don, again. But this came about after a discussion that this was going to be fourth Monday. An email that we're going to be on the fourth, it's going to be the fifth. So there were a number of us that are going to determine this, because they had to reschedule the library because they didn't have it there, so they were lucky to do it. So once again, it's next Monday night, next Monday morning at 9 o'clock. Anybody that didn't, you can go to Dexter Library.
Do you think it'll be in August?
I hope the, I hope the fourth Monday, because I think I have a majority vote to make it fourth Monday, okay? Thank you. Sorry about all that. Nobody was more frustrated than all the other people that called in.
Any other comments on the communications? Seeing none, we'll move to our first report this evening from our finance director, treasurer, and assessor, Ms. Cherry. Welcome.
Good evening, council. How are you tonight?
Good.
Thank you. So you have my written report in front of you. A couple of things. I mentioned there that our investment manager could not be here this evening, just wanting to tender his apologies. He's in Ohio for a meeting. So he is planning to be here next month to give you...
We should tend to our apologies to him.
To give you the quarterly report. But as you can see in there, we're, I'm pleased with the performance of the investments, so that's a good thing. Oh, did you have any questions about this before I start launching anything?
I have one.
Yeah.
Relative to the credit card services. It wasn't clear to me... I'm sorry, page 14 and 15. You mentioned there's a fee involved to the city...
Yeah.
And the fees to the users are higher than point of pay.
Yes. So...
What are the fees to the city? And are the, do the city pay fees at the same time that the users do?
Okay, no. With point and pay, we pay no fees. It's all a user-based thing. With this new system, it's $100 a month is the basic kind of package for the support and what they offer, and that would be something that the city would pay. And the amenities that you get are listed in there, like the pay-by-tax, and that sort of thing. Plus, they would, like, right now, we email out our bills. They would handle the emailing of the bills. They would handle reminder notices. They would handle all of that electronic communication. So that's kind of the, you know, the trade-off as far as savings on personnel time. There also have some other services that they offer that would be like a per-item kind of fee that I don't really want to give you too much until we decide whether or not council can have a comfort level with the user fees. That's kind of why I brought this in front now, to kind of get your idea, because when we originally did the credit card services, I know user fees were of concern to some council people. Point and Pay, I mean, they do, they do a decent job. They have been having a lot of service outages recently, and they have been increasing in number. So I think I want to move away from point and pay no matter what. It just kind of depends on what platform we get to replace them and whether or not they're compatible with BSNA. So this is kind of the first one that I was exploring.
What are the ACH transactions?
ACH transactions are, if you have, and this is one thing, too, like, right now, we get people's banking information, and then we upload a file to our bank that takes their utility payment out of their accounts. So they would handle that. But there is a user fee associated with that, whereas right now, there is no user fee. But that is something that we could still keep in-house. That is not something that we would have to migrate over to them if there wasn't a comfort level for that.
Because that was what, $295?
Yes.
The city would pay for...
And I also have not done any real negotiating with them yet. I mean, when we brought point and pay on board, we did do some fee structure negotiation as far as especially your lower level. I'm thinking that this company is not really going to be open to that, because it's just not their model. But it won't hurt to ask if, you know, if we decide to move forward with something like this.
So you're saying if you're on the auto-back utility pay thing, you now have a fee every month?
You would if we switched it to them, but that's, as I said, that's something we could keep in-house.
What do you mean, keep it in-house?
Well, like, I would still do the ACH. The only problem if we kept it in-house is that, okay, so right now, like, for instance, if you have an ACH and you want to cancel it, or, you know, you're short of money or whatever, you have to call us and it has to be done in a certain amount of time before we actually submit that to the bank. Whereas here, it's all the customer controls, just like you would, like, if you went onto your DTE account or whatever, say, "I want to pay $20 this week, $20 next week, $20 a week after on ACH," or "I want to pay, I don't have enough money, I want to cancel this payment." Those features wouldn't be available if we did that. So it's kind of a trade-off. I mean, I certainly can bring this back in more detail, like, as a discussion, or as a discussion item for council, but I just kind of wanted to introduce it first to see if there was even any interest in moving along further with it, before I actually did an item for you.
I don't mind having more information, but I don't want to pay.
Right.
Using fees is what I don't...
I understand. Yeah. I did ask them also for a, a model where we would pay the fees, and they said that that's, well, that's not very common, but they could provide that for us if we wanted. I know.
Scott? Did I hear you correctly when you said that you definitely want to move away from point and pay?
I believe so.
Okay.
I have concerns about their customer service levels, and quite frankly, I'm beginning to have some concerns about their safety systems.
Good. So I think I'm in favor of looking at some options.
This is... Oh, I'm sorry.
And I think you said Envoy Cloud wasn't necessarily the only provider that...
They're not the only provider out there. They are, though, the one thing that's important is that whatever we get can integrate with BSNA, you know, well, and they are one of the preferred providers for BSNA. Now, I haven't, I haven't seen what, this is the one, this is the service that the chatter's going out about on the treasurer's forum. I haven't really looked in deeply to see what other ones are available out there yet.
I guess from my perspective, I'd like to see at least one...
Oh, right.
One other option.
Right.
Maybe a couple.
Right.
Kind of pros and cons, but I would, I would support...
But I would highly suspect that no matter what we would look at, you're going to see a higher fee level for the users.
I know maybe.
Just because that's the way the, you know, I mean, we haven't changed, point and pay hasn't changed their pricing on us since we started them, which is probably why I have concerns about their service levels.
Yeah.
But frankly.
Get what you're paying for. What's it? Go ahead.
But like you said, and right up here, you know, this other company, they're charging more, but they're offering different types of services.
Yes, and they're, they're offering payment methods that are more, they're getting more and more acceptable, you know, like pay-by-tax, which, I mean, I don't do, but apparently you get a text and you can say, "Yes, pay it," and...
So it's a question of, you're paying for these...
Yes.
Features that a lot of people may not use.
That's true.
So they're paying higher fees for...
Yeah. I mean, I do, and the other thing too, the other thing that with this one here, and then I'd have to look, one thing I liked about this one here is that I do get a lot of questions with tax bills, because I don't do ACH for taxes just because it's, with the property transfers and the changes, it's just, it's too much to administer. And people could administer their own tax bills this way. So that is an advantage, but, so, okay, well, what I'll do then is I will get, gather more information and actually get an item for you that has some comparison shopping and that sort of thing, and then we can move on to that one. That's-
Good.
When you do that, can you provide examples of the service challenges, the service declines, or whatever you're saying is declining?
Oh, point and pay?
Yeah.
Well, I can start collecting emails. I usually delete them, but I'll see how many are in my, in my lead. I just cleaned out my folder too very recently. But we've been getting frequent, you know, we have an outage, you know, this is why. We have an outage, we have an outage, we have a service outage, and it just seems to be coming more and more and more.
They're in your original email account?
Oh, that's right, they would be in my Gmail account. Thank you, Courtney. Tell them, Taffy, I am. So, yeah, I can. The other thing I wanted to mention, we got a little update, a couple things. We did actually get our official result of our audit of minimum assessing requirements, and we did not have any deficiencies, so we had a typically 100% audit on it, so that was yay. That was really good. So, and then I was talking with Jim Smith, Councilperson Smith, about some software that I recently had gotten. It's a little app called Pivot Point Software. And I just kind of wanted to, it's an assessing app. And I don't know if you can see this here, but it actually lets us pinpoint the parcels by location. So it's pretty cool. And then you download, it lets you download the, all the fieldwork and all the assessing information from BSNA. You do your fieldwork in this tablet, upload it back into BSNA. Huge time saver, not walking around with a clipboard. So that was pretty cool. And it was pretty cheap, too. Six hundred dollars a year. Which I thought was kind of worth it. And that, oh, and one last thing on a personal note, I did finally finish all that training I've been doing, so I am a Level Three. Moving away from assessing and into the finance side, you do have the year-end report. Now, keep in mind, this doesn't include any accounts payable that haven't, you know, that we saw outstanding. We finished the year in good shape. I did, I was able to close the fund, that bond fund that's been hanging out for a long time. We made the last payments out on the one tax tribunal issue and transferred the funds from there into the facilities bond fund. There was about 28,000, I think, lovely. And closed that fund, so that, that's good, because that's been hanging out for a couple years. And that's really about it, unless you have any specific questions.
Mr. Cousins?
You said you weren't able to close out that accounts payable. Are you close to that number of 45344? Are they going to fluctuate up or not a lot, or not?
Well, we're still going to be taking invoices through the end of August.
Okay.
So I-
Got a guess?
Pardon?
Got a guess?
There's not that much left in general fund. I just paid, yeah, so, I mean, the 45. I'm sorry, the, yeah, the 40 was kind of a, wasn't up to me, but, I don't know. I mean, you pay it on big things like police and fire and all.
Oh, the 40, okay, yeah.
The Patreon reference, then the 40.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, John. Last column there.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. So, so my question I asked you many times is the percentage there of the 678, you know, and it's just flexibility in that accounts payable. What's the percentage as compared to the 15% we have set aside for revenue budget review and unbalance?
I mean, what is our fund balance right now? Off the top of my head, I'm not completely sure, but I believe it's in the low 40s. Thank you. I can get you that answer. I have it back in the office.
Other questions for Marie? Thank you. Appreciate your good work. Our next report tonight is from our Services Superintendent. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Council. You're back and provided a two-week report, and with my report, I have four updates I'd like to discuss. My first update is Central Street. That started last week. They came in and removed, milled and removed most of the asphalt. We've been working with Fonsen, OHM in the city, and they're going to leave a little piece from Fifth Street headed back to the gazebo until after Dexter Days, before that's removed. These also went in on the one side, and they have removed the old base. They're going to put a new base in there so we can get that road where it needs to be. They worked this Saturday. They've been doing a really good job communicating with the city staff as the project goes. Do you have any questions on Central Street?
The rain hasn't bothered?
A little bit.
Yeah.
A little bit, but they're, they're seeming to work through it. It's not really bothering us. They're doing a good job of protecting our existing storm sewer. Second update would be on page 28 of my report, the secondary digester lid. The last time we hauled sludge, we were able to hose that out, the channels where the lids go, and it's working, it's working fine. Also associated with that lid is the Hedberg's Project, which, when we get that up and running, which is a little bit later in my update, that's going to help out considerably. The next topic is Westridge Lift Station. Over the past few years, we've been replacing Motorola ATUs, or RTUs. It's a communication between the lift stations and back to the skater alarm systems. We had budgeted to replace this one for $6,500, so next council meeting, I would, I'm going to bring that up. Also, though, I'd like to make another change to the lift station. Right now, we're running off floats in that particular lift station. We're getting a lot of faulty alarms. We have over the last six, eight months, nine months. Other lift stations that we have, we have a level transducer that's down in the bottom. These floats right on top, and a lot of times, we get solids of different degrees that interfere with, with the floats. With the level transducer, it's at the bottom in the water. So when I bring back the estimate for the $6,500 for the RTU, I would like to ask for another $2,500 to get rid of those floats and make the system run a lot smoother. And with the, the level transducer, we can know exactly how many gallons and where we're at from the skater alarm system that we have back at the wastewater plant. So that'll be next packet. The last one is the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. The 24th, 25th, we haven't decided on what day yet. We're going to be connecting Westridge, Westridge line from the lift station that actually is at the wastewater treatment point to the new Hedberg's building. What that means is the 24th to 25th, before we do that, we're going to start up the new Hedberg's building. Currently, we've been running off of the tertiary filters, and everything's been running perfectly, so we're going to be starting that up this week. We still have some other underground stuff that we need to do at the wastewater treatment plant to get it, everything connected to the Hedberg's building, but this is the first thing that we're going to do. One of the things that's going to happen when we do that process of hooking the lift station line into the Hedberg's buildings, we're going to have a couple VAC trucks over at Westridge Lift Station during that time period, just in case the connection takes a little bit longer. We don't want to disturb any of the residents over at Westridge, which we don't think it's going to take, but maybe a couple others should do that. That's all for my updates. Is there any questions on my report?
Mr. Bell?
I was curious why we fixed the outdoor light out of the ground?
Actually, it's offers.
Oh.
Yeah.
On the building?
On the building.
Okay.
I didn't know.
Yeah, it's public lighting.
It's public lighting.
Well, it's our parking lot.
Unique.
Just a curiosity, on page 27 underwater, that was dominant from the schools about cutting, capping a water meter?
Yeah, the, the new schools, Cornerstone, when they handed down the other school, they're anchored now and-
Beacon?
Beacon. There was already an existing water line going in there, so they got rid of the existing one, and they're going to use one water line for both buildings. They didn't need two. So that's the one that they're not managing.
Dan, just walking around town a little bit, on Baker Road, somewhere near Grand, and then over on, I think Inverness, down between Second and Third, there's a couple examples where sidewalk's been replaced by somebody, but it's poor, like this table, with no joint joints.
Where is it at?
There's one on Baker, on the west side of Baker, just north, just north of Grand, I think it is.
And that, and that contractor is supposed to come back and do saw cuts on that one. I know about that.
Okay, I think there's also one on Inverness. I just was wondering if that was our standard practice.
Oh, it absolutely isn't our standard practice.
Okay, because, okay.
So I know about the one on Baker, but I'm not sure the one on-
I think the other one's on Inverness on the east side.
Okay. I will look into that.
Okay, thanks. I didn't know if there was right-of-way permits pulled, and that was just not expected, or whatever.
Well, the one in Inverness, I can't tell you for sure, but I will go look at it. But the one on Baker Road, we've been trying to get the contractor back in, because-
Gotcha. It looks like they're waiting to underground.
They're going to create a saw cut, which is fine, which has, you've got to come back and saw cut it.
Okay.
Question, Dan?
By any chance, was the roadkill that coyote that stuttered? The roadkill, was that a coyote?
It was not.
Oh, God.
Was it a roadrunner?
The deer that died right in front of the wall from the Dexter side, literally.
We got it, it's, we got it here, and we're just so excited to get a hard hand.
So we've got like a million dollars left under the wastewater treatment plant project. What are we projecting as a finish date?
Well, what I would like, Mr. Mayor, is I'd like one more council meeting. We've got a lot of underground that's going in. Everything at the wastewater project, not in wood, is going excellent. We got two or three weeks underground to get everything tied back in. And we all know that underground, they can find things, but I've talked to Courtney a little bit about it. We've been with F&amp;V. If everything keeps going the way it's going, we could be a month early. I mean, but I need to get through the next couple weeks to get everything tied in, and then I plan on coming with F&amp;V and giving you a really good report on where we're at with the project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Dan? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is our Community Development Manager, Michelle. How are you today?
I'm fine. How's council tonight? Excellent, excellent. Okay, so you have my report in front of you, and before I go into the updates, do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Smith?
On your list of meetings?
Yes, sir.
One, two, and 24th. What type of meeting does that?
So it, it is a series that Oakland County Economic Development, Office of Economic Development puts on, and it's talking about business coming into a community. From their perspective, what do they need? Whether that, whether that's financing, whether that's streamlined processes. It's, it's the business giving us in the, in the profession the feedback we need to make the improvements, to make it a better environment for them to, to be in a community. So I'm interested to see how that's going to-
So are we talking from a business standpoint?
It's from the business standpoint.
I mean, not really somebody investing. They're investing business-wise.
Right, so a business expanding, a business coming in for the first time, that's the investors' perspective. Yeah, I meant learning how to invest money. I know you were all shocked the fourth quarter report came in, right after the fourth quarter, so. Okay, so I want you to know that today Courtney and I met with a gentleman named Doug Weber. He was recommended to us by City Attorney Steve Espe to help with the small cell 5G technology that's coming down the pipe. You've heard me talk about this before. I kind of dragged my feet a little on meeting with him. Allison Heatley, you know, she's at one of our planning commissioners, she also works for Ann Arbor. She actually met with him first and got, so I got a chance to ask her, you know, hey, should I waste my time? Is this really worth it? And you know Allison, she has no flying, you know, there's no flies on her, so. She, she was very impressed with him. She, Ann Arbor has asked him for a proposal to help with things like the regulations, how to regulate, what can you regulate, review processes, et cetera. Courtney and I were also impressed with him. He certainly has the experience and the knowledge to help, to help us with this, so we've asked him for a proposal. So you can look forward to learning more about that. And part of his proposal will also be an education component. I'm ramping up on this, but I certainly can't say it with any hood spot that I can tell you all about this, but just trust me. So we're all going to have to learn with this. We have a hearing at Chelsea Court, 14, 14A District, I think it is, next Monday, and it's for 7555 Ann Arbor Street. That's the one that, that you're aware of. We've been working, I can, trying to get the property owner to maintain his property. K-Space, we had pre-app meeting, went very well last week. We then followed up with their engineer today. The, there's not a drainage issue on K-Space's property, and they are certainly not contributing to a drainage issue on the properties from Dexter Crossing that have bugged. But in, with their new development, they will extend an existing burn. I don't want any chance that it's going to create any problems, because the property owners are having some drainage issues. Again, it's not the fault of K-Space, it's other issues. So, but K-Space's engineer is going to make sure that on K-Space's property, they create a swell that will then channel all of K-Space's drainage to their, to an existing stormwater detention, or storm structure. That way, there won't be any problems. So that was a really good meeting. But it also gave me a chance to talk to Daryl. I haven't had a chance to talk with him in quite a while, and it's always refreshing to talk with him. He's so, in some ways, so like Dad, and just, just a normal guy on the street, but the man's brilliant. He's absolutely brilliant. He's going to, he's interested in meeting with our Bond Council to learn more about industrial revenue bonds and possibly using that to help fund his expansion. The other thing he did express an interest is, is the industrial facilities tax abatement. And so we'll go through that process, and I will take into account when I do my report. I think Stack and Paul, you both had some suggestions for me when we do that report, and so I will incorporate those two when this comes to you. So lastly, it's kind of bittersweet for me, we sold our lots. We closed on them last week. So I don't, I don't want to build any houses. I really wanted to. My husband did too, but the cost to build became so, it was just so much, and I didn't want to build super expensive homes, so. So we sold it, and it's going to, they're going to be built on by a family. Husband and wife are providing a home for their special needs son. He's independent, but he has special needs, and then they'll build their own house. I'm not sure what they're going to do with the interior lot yet, but, you know, at least somebody will be able to help. Okay? Any questions for me?
I don't have any, anybody? Thank you very much, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Hey, don't believe there are any more of your other report updates?
Yeah, there's the cap darts.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's in here, that's attached. Those are the media minutes, I believe, from last month.
Last, sorry, June, right?
Nothing to add. So if you have any comments on the cap turn, please. Okay, no subcommittee reports, so we'll have the City Manager report, please.
So OHM has agreed that we can use our costume for next Monday's virtual workshop with Mr. Newell, the Fire Station Consultant. We did have the test of the technology on Friday, and that works fine. It should be no problem to do that. We can also record it in case anyone coming wants to watch it. It's free of charge. He's not targeting us for that, so there's no cost. The countywide road mileage information, I don't know if anybody has any comments, but that was on the list I planned to submit. It doesn't bind us to anything. It's just something that they can use when they talk- It doesn't bind us anything. It's just something that they can use when they talk about what projects we'll get done.
Got a question. On the roads on, that you're listed there for the county?
Uh huh.
What year are we doing grand?
Next year, twenty-twenty.
And I thought we were gonna try to piece the Hudson-
Until Central came in, over budget, or made over estimate. We'll have to just see how things shake out with the F and B.
I was just curious, because all of a sudden now it's four years.
Yeah, that was this original place, and then we thought about trying to move it up. We'll see, and we may have been in there, but like I said, this isn't studying anything into stone. It's just a stone.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's on Central Street.
And we've given them enough there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we only get about ninety thousand.
Okay, that's a good shot.
That would definitely be.
Okay.
Uh, we did receive our Eagle permit for Milk Tree Park Phase Two. I think they're just finishing up some end-up questions, right, Justin, and then-
Correct.
You'll be ready to, hopefully obligated for the park project. If anyone have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. So as far as the trash, we did, um, the waste management contract that we have only says ninety-six and sixty-four. There's no mention of the thirty-fives in our actual physical contract. That was a courtesy of Waste Management to provide them to our smaller condo complexes who have one, basically, you know, one-car garages and very limited storage space. So they're also contracted to provide thirty-five gallon containers to anyone. To add that to our contract, padside would be an additional dollar per house, per year, per month, I'm sorry. So it would be, that's an extra amount of cost. Their, the only other option he provided was if the city could purchase thirty-five gallon carts, which we would then need to sell. People can provide their own thirty-five gallon carts. They shouldn't be taking them. I mean, this is a transition, so there's always going to be things that happen. But there really isn't a way for us to offer that.
You can purchase your thirty-five gallon-
Correct. Or you can downsize to the sixty-
I could hardly get mine to the house. I was shocked at how heavy they were.
You could downsize to the sixty-four for trash.
Well, the other part of it though is to height, height your trash up that high, hold the lid open and try to push it out.
Right.
It's really difficult. I was stunned at how it got-
As long as it has a lift bar on it, then Waste Management can service it. And they're not using the automated trucks yet. They're not ready. They're compressed natural gas, they're special order trucks. They're not here yet. So yes, they're still taking it the old way, but that's only until the new trucks come in the next couple of months, and then they'll be dumping them overhead like every other community that has these carts, so. I don't, you know, we've had maybe four or five phone calls about this. On this topic of having the smaller containers, which we've explained to people the issue and told them to go to the sixty-four, that they can get their own, and that's the answer that we've been providing. So I don't really know what else. So like I said, the contract is very clear that it's only sixty-five and ninety-six with the option to switch up or down based on, um.
And just before, you know, we could put two regular trash cans out.
Right.
You know, so this, you know.
Some people want more than the ninety-six. They want two of them, you know, so.
Cause-
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, it is hard getting used to the size of them, but then I also think, okay, there's gonna be times that you may have some additional stuff that you want, you know, get rid of, and you got the volume, you got the space there.
And, you know, the sixty-four's, I have a sixty-four with a one-car garage, and I don't, you know, I haven't had an issue with that. Other than that, I, oh, the library sidewalk is the only other thing I just wanted to point out that we're gonna get that done because it came in under what we budgeted, and the library will be paying half of it to get that done.
Questions for Courtney? Mr. Cousins?
Sorry, I had my agenda and told my wife she's very pleased that it's gonna be done since it involved the development of the, uh, the area there for where the sidewalk will go. I think it makes sense to do all that. Appreciate that. Finally, we'll be able to get the bike, uh, the pair of that there finished as well. Comment as we related to the dumpsters was made not last week, not last meeting, but two meetings ago, Mr. Keo. I can report to you that I do pay for two pickups, so my-
Two trash bags?
Two trash bags, my renter and my, um, my-
Private.
There are two.
Gotcha.
I don't know about any other people in the city. I just don't know about mine.
Thank you for checking all that.
I'm sure somebody would have cut me anyways.
Other questions for Courtney? Okay, I'll keep this moving. I had a short written report to pack it. I don't have anything to add. I'm keeping my voice going. I do want to say, you know, that, uh, the open house that Avalon and Faith and I actually did last Tuesday was very well attended, and I thought it was a good information sharing opportunity. I'm interested to, I tried to listen as closely as I could tonight to Ms. Griffin as she spoke to us. Certainly would like to answer as many questions that she has as possible. So to the extent that if anyone knows the answer, uh, or that we can get the answers, you know, the goal is of then to share information back to her. Some of those questions she hasn't asked me before. So, uh, I have traded several emails with their information as I've had it available to me since February. I tried to do the best I could there, but, um, you know, I don't, I don't personally think it makes any sense to slow anything down. I mean, they, their project is on a certain timeline, and, um, there are some other public opportunities for people to come and speak to their concerns. Although I'm not, not always clear on what the exact concern is. I get the questions about numbers and whether the situation exists today. I'm not sure what the concern is over having either affordable or supportive housing in the community. That isn't very well. That concern that she's raised to me stumps me because I don't, I don't really get the question. I think intuitively, intuitively, if you want a diverse community and provide an opportunity, that this makes a whole lot of sense. I don't exactly know how you go about finding out the answer to the exact number of people that might need supportive housing in any community, as big as we are or as little as we are, depending on who you, you are thinking about it. But I do, I would like everybody's help. The extent we can answer her questions, that's part of our goal and role here, so. Scott?
Just real briefly, I'd like to suggest that when we receive the letter she read tonight, that it, we get some input from Avalon on that because she cited some specific federal regulations, maybe state regulations, numbers. There's some regulation and legislative facts that were in there that I'd like to have that in. Not that I don't trust, but I just-
No, sure.
I, sure, I mean, any individual, one of us could probably go on the internet, verify or check, but we should-
Yeah, nothing.
One of the things I have about that letter is that it talks about, um, the danger of putting this close to school. I don't understand what the concern is there. What is, I don't get the danger of putting it close to a school.
Well, it depends, I guess, on if you approach things from a position of concern or a position of trust. Could come down to that. Maybe she just looks at things that really, but I agree with you.
It's just there, but it doesn't have, it's not fleshed out. I don't know what it is that, um-
But if there's, if there's sixty-four people on that that have signed the petition, or whatever number she threw out there, sixty-two, you know, I'd like to try and provide answers back to as many of the questions that were raised tonight, whether they're hers or hers, questions as possible.
Is there any way we can, or do they, when they sign the petition, did they sign them with an address? That we know that they're city residents or not, or do they have any idea?
Haven't even seen it. Not even laid eyes on it.
Just get all right, we'll get the copies of it.
Yeah, I haven't even laid eyes on it.
There's one thing I'd like to make sure that I, that we do before we provide any feedback on any of the questions. I want to make sure that the answers we give are in line with the, uh, federal fair housing. I want to make sure that in our effort to be responsive, we're making it clear that we, that the concerns have to be balanced with the fair housing.
Yeah, for sure. And I will be out of town on the twenty-ninth, so I will not be attending the, uh, show at O H M. Thank you though for offering the room. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that really a official meeting or do we?
It's a work session.
I don't know.
It's a work session. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be posted as a work session.
Okay, thank you.
No action.
Any other questions? Should we got anything? Okay. Will we want to consent agenda, please?
I will include the I N S S consent agenda, two of them. Jones and Payroll need $320,338 and two cents, and the closure of a portion at Webster Drive on July twenty-seventh from eleven to six.
Moved by Ms. Fisher?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Both. Mr. Jones, please call it all.
Cousins?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Knight?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Motion carries. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a three-minute break so I can go clear my head a little bit. Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, we will return back to the agenda at new business item, help one. Consideration of purchasing the Dexter Ann Arbor Road property.
Would you like to make a motion? Make a motion that we proceed with the purchasing of the MAF property. And if we look at the flow chart, uh, that would be option three under the July twenty-second, twenty nineteen, which includes, uh, ending the inspection period, uh, paying the ten thousand dollar additional deposit, and the purchase price is five hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-three. And that would move toward a August closing.
I'll second their motion.
Motion by Smith, second by Cousins. Okay, discussion?
Uh, a question for staff. Do we need to designate where the funds are going through or make any budget amendments as part of this?
Um, I would put that on the August twelfth meeting.
Okay. And so, to be clear, we've already put twenty thousand down. Tonight, we would have to put ten thousand down, so it's understood that the motion would include authorization for that.
Yeah.
Uh, so the remaining balance would be five hundred fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. Were there any, we've got the report here from Mr. Munzel. Were there any big items that he expressed concern with? There are some dual things where we get it right, but we also-
Right, so there is things like water management sewerings, which obviously are a toss, so that's not an issue. The only thing, um, so we'll have the shared access road and maintenance costs. Jeff Archie didn't really have an estimate on that, but it's, you know, plowing it and maintaining a small of access drive. And then the other thing was the stormwater split, and Jeff, I did ask him if he had an estimate on the cost for that, and he, they had estimated it at the time they closed with Rainbow at like two to three thousand dollars a year for the maintenance of the stormwater, but I have no idea how accurate that is.
What was that figure?
Two to three thousand dollars a year was just something he found in the file from their conversation. Um, you know, there's-
And that's for what?
That's maintenance of the stormwater system based on that formula that's in the, um, easement. So it's, there's like a hundred percent of the cost. I think it's fifty percent is paid by Eaton Court, and the other fifty percent is paid and split by the MAF property, the kindergartener property, and the bank.
For the pond?
For the, yeah, for the pond, for anything related to the stormwater, the alcohol to the pond. There's two ponds, I believe.
There's two?
Yeah, there's two ponds. A little pond and then the bigger pond.
And it looks like there weren't any bright flags raised in the Phase One environmental assessment. It's kind of neat to see agricultural starting in nineteen thirty-seven. That's-
Yeah, they have the ability to go back pretty far, and they felt like it was always agricultural or vacant, so they didn't raise any concerns.
That's what this says?
Yeah.
We just got this today?
Yeah, so he told me Friday that he didn't have any concerns.
So we don't even get a chance to read this?
I sent, well, I mean, I sent it out earlier, but I-
Earlier?
Did I get an email?
Today.
Okay, I, not, not my- No, A S T I sent out today.
Was that today?
Correct.
Eleven twenty-three A M.
Oh, that was, uh, straight back then?
Yes.
I knew there was something, so.
And one last question. If we don't purchase today, the price increases by fifty thousand dollars, correct, roughly?
Correct.
Yeah.
We'd have to choose either to-
Pay.
Pay the twenty thousand dollar deposit and continue it on. That'd basically extend the inspection period.
All right, excellent. But that still increases the sale price.
Correct. However, we would know that we were actually going to have money to pay ourselves back for that if we waited. But if we did wait, we might know that we have money to pay ourselves back from the village, whereas now this is a hundred percent risk. Because if we don't get any village money to build the stations, we own a piece of property with sketchy chances of reselling it since it's been sitting on the market for fifteen to twenty years.
So Jim, what's the hurry in doing this now? What's the hurry in doing this now? Well, it saves us, uh, fifty thousand dollars, uh, purchase price. And, you know, gets it under our control.
So you don't even know how to have the second public hearing, or second public meeting, and get, and, uh?
No, I'd prefer to go ahead and buy the property, and then, you know, when we're talking to the public, we're talking about, you know, what the options are for fire station, for city hall, and stuff like that. You know, this doesn't build the fire hall. This just, this provides us with the property so that we have an option.
But then it's more than just an option. It's, we're going to own it. An option means we extend it until November. This would be we own it and then have to deal with it. It becomes not an option anymore. That's what worries me.
We own the Dan Hoey property, and then we don't, so. So now we're buying a different piece of property that we'll-
Mr. Bell?
Where will the purchase money come from at the village sales?
Right, well, we're going to be purchasing it before the village, so it will come from, I assume, the facility fund and then unrestricted reserve. If the village were to pass, we could pay ourselves, we have to write it such that we can pay ourselves back. If not, then we just have no facility fund and less unrestricted reserve.
And there's potential of the 100, what is it, 98, whatever it is, the sale of the L1 property that has to be spent on facilities, correct?
Yeah, that was by council resolution, not by anything else. But yeah, I think that was like 140-ish.
How much, 140?
140-ish, I think.
That was higher than this.
Yeah, I think it was 285 divided by 2.
Plus the interest.
Yeah.
And we had some money allocated toward the substation.
Right.
We don't have to, because the D V A is taking that away.
Is that 67,000?
62,000, I think.
Cause like, there's 294, I think, in the facility now. Then 140 from Dan Hoey.
That will come for at least another, you know, year and a half.
Other council comments?
I don't see any comments coming out of the community. I may be the only one to feel so.
Well, everything feels like a rush. I mean, it's, it's hard to feel like you just got, but it's a 30-page report the day of the meeting.
It's actually 343 and you have the whole thing because I didn't print the appendices.
Okay, well, whatever it is. To think that council didn't have a chance to even read the site specification before buying. Four to me, four titled. So in the, in the packet, there's a whole bunch of title work. Is there a map that shows these parcels?
Well, that's why I printed, I'm not sure which parcel directly, but the one that references MAF and the bank and as far as the, the stormwater is on the map that I put on the table that shows the bank, the MAF parcel, and the 100 page parcel.
Well, all of these, all of these documents have individual exhibits that are not put together. And it's hard to see where stuff is. And there's, there's drawings.
Right.
Don't get me wrong, but they're there's not one, there's not one drawing in here that shows where anything is relative to each other. And as you go through the title work, all of these, there's parcel one and parcel two and I'm not sure I understand where they all are.
Well, there was some.
Are some related to the property that Eaton Court is on?
I mean, I understand those sanitary use for this. It's just not all real clear to me.
Yeah, I didn't print the easements for the stuff that it was a city.
But you know, like on page?
Oh, does page on?
I don't know, page 138.
95?
Page what, John?
Page 138 talks about, leave a description of parcel one. And then with each thing, if you go down, you know, the depiction of parcel one isn't that what we're talking about?
Well, this was.
And then, you know, then it goes to parcel two.
That's because some of these were for when the parcel was all together.
Yeah.
So the A T C references, several of these actually refer to the U, the building with the University of Michigan Health and then some of it referred to the banks.
Because at one time.
Cause it was on the other side of the road.
Right, it was all one project at one point. So some of these are just things that were
part of Huron Farms, part of Eaton Court, part of Golden, part one. There are multiple site plans and multiple.
I'm just saying, we took up 100 pages of the packet to show this stuff, but it's hard to understand what it even is. A lot of loans would be used as a basis for making a decision. I mean, it was supposed to be in the inspection period, but we haven't, in my opinion, inspected it yet. I don't see anything on, in the U of M parcel, by the way. I think it's all on the other side of the middle. But maybe somebody could show me an overall drawing could tell me that.
It doesn't have any one overall drawing, trying to be multiple different assets.
If anybody feels we should wait, they can offer amendment to the motion to pay the $20,000 deposit and extend the inspection. See if that, or?
Any further questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, Ms. Jones, please call the question. I believe the motion was to buy the property for 544,283 by putting an extra $10,000 down to put the closing at the next meeting? Or no, sorry, off the chart. When would the closing be?
Oh, it would be August 21st. So we would decide on where the money was going to come from at the first meeting in August.
Is that the only decision we need to make in August?
I believe so. This was probably the last decision.
Okay. Yeah, please call.
Bell?
No.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelles?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Keough?
No. Motion carries four to three. Okay, new business item L2, consideration of little work to don for pedestrian safety project. Category 2 works for a amount not to exceed 99,000.
I'll make that motion?
Motion by Cousins, second. And one second by Michelles. Okay. Do you have some additional questions for Michelles, Ms. Nichols, or Patrick does?
Well, we were just talking about, I mean, basically the last thing that needs to get, what we look forward with this work to put the four rapid flash and be into the locations we discussed. The only thing yet to be determined is the actual location of where it would go on Ann Arbor Street in Kensington. Placing it, the best place to put it is right in front of 7541 Ann Arbor Street, which, as I put in the packet, has a special land use on it that requires the parking out front to be used for the business truck. So to get rid of all of the parking in front of there, I think is wrong. So if we leave it at the intersection with the, having the crossing guard there during the peak school times as part of our sort of one-year test of all of this, you know, I don't know, I think that might be the best option. But I, it's just, it's just, it's difficult because of that, the best location for it. I just, I don't think it's fair with that special land use there because we banned her from using her driveway or the alley.
What's, what's wrong with the 100 foot away from the intersection to follow the rule?
If, so if we, if we shift that, basically, if you are looking at page 183 in your packet, that's been shifted to the right of where it's located now further east. The only issue there is that we would need to do some changes to the drainage structures out there. There's a drainage structure on that side, so we have to extend that out. And some potential conflicts we have in the driveway near the side of the street. It's just not as ideal of a location. We're also further away from the light, so potentially we would potentially need to add another light, probably more on the southern side, to try to help with that a little bit. So it just becomes a little more complicated there. It seemed to fit pretty well at this particular location, but as Courtney mentioned, there's some we didn't see when we put it at that particular location.
You'd have to connect at the sidewalk, then?
Yes, it would, it would have to.
Extend on the, to the northeast side?
I don't know, on both sides.
Yeah, both sides.
Yeah.
So tie in all locations.
Zach, have we had any contact with Ms. Marilla about this going out front in her parking spaces?
I, I was, I was going to, and then I realized that what the problem was, and so I did not because I don't.
Okay, so I can also make the pitch that anyone coming from Ann Arbor, along Ann Arbor Street, can park on the other side of the street now, and then they have a more convenient crossing instead of just parking right in front of there.
Right, but I, then you're just adding people crossing the street. You're just making more conflict by having even more.
I'm okay with traffic having to slow down for people to cross. Do we need to have this site resolved tonight, or can we pass? Sort this out?
Well, let's talk a little bit about the 100-foot location for a second. What's actually wrong with that location? Those parking spaces are the furthest from town. It's convenient if the people are walking from Milk, or not Milk Creek, from Wiley to go to the Rainbow or to the Morning Star. They don't have to go as far to the west to cross. It's not opposite a driveway. And yeah, we have a drainage structure to move or to, or wherever it is.
The house on the corner is using, is not using that for its primary parking.
No, because there's a vacant lot.
Do you have to be 100 foot off the intersection, or could you do like 50 feet off?
The guidance is 100.
The guidance is 100.
Cause I'm just thinking that, you know, if you came 50 feet off and eliminated the parking spaces on the southwest side there. I mean, then you got open territory on both sides of the road for visibility.
Well, depending on where you start at the 100 foot, I mean, that, the red line has started, I don't know where that starts, Patrick, is it the side of the intersection?
That was just where I chose to start.
Yeah, so I mean, you could probably justify any spot in there. But I, I don't, I think that's a good spot.
Yeah, I just was thinking, you know, wiping out like two of the spaces, but wipe out three.
You're probably losing all those spaces.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, truthfully, you probably are just redoing the curb all the way down. You know, the curb widens out to the west of the existing crosswalk. It probably wouldn't widen out there anymore. It wouldn't be streetable. You'd just run it all the way to the point at which you wanted the crosswalk with the rapid flash and peek up. And you'd get rid of the three spaces on the north side, and the one, two, three, four, five spaces on the south. Or something like that. Zach, what was your idea to pass three of them and act the foreland? I mean, this is the most, this is the most talked about spot.
Yeah.
I mean.
What do you mean? You mean more people talking about it?
Well, I mean, in terms of it's gotten the most play in the public, okay? I mean, it's, you know, for obvious reasons, there was a accident there twenty-some years ago. Not that the timing of that has anything to do, but I mean, I think if we're going to prove these, we should be, this is, this is the one. We should be acting on this one.
Is the concern with in front of 7529 to the southeast that it conflicts with that driveway coming off of Peace Park?
Yeah, I just think there's a lot, the driveway, we have some lighting concerns we have to deal with and the drainage structures, so. The proposal, 100 foot off the other intersection, probably the biggest thing there is just the construction cost to that. And I think to the mayor's point, I think we would basically use the neck down at Kensington and just continue that until such a point we hit that 100 foot, then widen back out. Which I think why you call the question whether we obtain the ramps at Kensington. Maybe we leave the decorative, but we don't have the ramp there just because it's so close to the other crossing. That could be something we, that's what we're doing.
What's the ballpark for us redoing the curb there? And the water?
That one, I'd have to get back.
Well, you did have some bump out costs to add in front of the original one.
Yeah, the original one is, I think it was 20,000, but I'm guessing that's going to be probably closer to 40. We start extending that out, or pave it removal and.
So we're going to put a crosswalk in like that.
It's not going to be stamp colored concrete.
But just something.
Correct. It would be striped.
Visible.
We are enhanced. Basically went to a wide or running from the glare as you're, as you're walking. You have these pretty wide.
Yeah, I mean, as I put in the memo of the bid, in the total 369,000, and we had budgeted 450 for the project, so, you know, we do have, it's not like we're running up against the budget.
Well, and that's a, get it, do what you need to do to get it at the 100 feet. If we got room, we can make it happen. I'm not concerned about closing the other one because for, for non-school children, it's more convenient. And if we take that out, people are still going to cross there, but cars aren't going to be aware of it.
We're just wanting to make sure we don't have parking, any parking too close to it, so there's good visibility.
The bump outs allow us to say type of parking. Didn't have bump outs the recommended practices to remove parking 100 feet in advance either direction. But by putting these bump outs, what we do is we give pedestrians adjacent to that lane. So it kind of, it kind of allows that urban condition to exist.
Cause with the current parking spaces there on the, the eastbound side right there by Kensington, that's the problem with the Kensington crossing now. there by Kensington, that's the problem with the Kensington crossing now is the parking's too close there, and so any cars that are parked there, even with the bump out, the people standing there aren't visible until you get right up on them. So, you know, if if we were going to use that at the intersection, I'd recommend before that we eliminate a space or two just from a visibility standpoint. And so I'd want to make sure that we still, because all the traffic going out Dexter on our road and worrying and coming back in the afternoon, yeah, if, you know, cars parked along there, just eliminate the visibility of of people standing there. I mean, it's just too busy of a time. So you gotta keep this, you know, parking away from those more so than you might think.
All right, so there's a motion Cousins, second Michelle's. Do we want to, where are we with the discussion of Kensington?
Well, yeah, that's a hundred foot away from the intersection.
Cousins, Michelle's, is that okay with the motion?
Yeah.
And then maybe, Patrick, you can bring back an estimate of it at the next meeting or whatever, obviously get started on it.
I don't think that's going to be something that Don does immediately. Um, I know that they're going to be starting early August, but, um, this isn't on their radar yet.
Okay.
So this includes the four locations.
And they know of our desire to have them in before school, it's possible?
They, their, uh, their schedule they turned in for the sidewalk portion that was awarded, um, had it, um, basically done the third week of August.
Okay.
This will be, we'll have to let them know about this. Still the same contract, still the same term, so they should all align with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Business item L3, consideration of scope from the OHM for pedestrian safety project inspection services for the amount that don't see, I believe we said thirty-seven thousand. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Michelle, second by Fisher, thank you, won. Any discussion, put me anything down? Questions from council? Zach? Is the thirty-seven thousand also split between major and local streets?
Yeah, I don't think dependent on whether, um, whether we're the most, I'm thinking, you know, probably, there's probably just a few spot inspection on the forestry sidewalk.
Yeah, I think that's that'll still be the-
It's kind of project dependent, Zach.
Okay. Any further questions? Please call the vote, Ms. Jones.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, new business item L4, consideration of scope amendment from Smith Group for Mil Creek Parkway Two.
I'm moved that we approved the scope amendment for not to exceed thirty-seven thousand.
Or fifteen thousand.
Oh, excuse me, fifteen thousand, one forty, one fourteen. My tab didn't move.
Second by Fisher, thank you. Do we have any eastern mustis, sawgrass rattlesnakes out there? Let me know when you get good.
They, uh, the report came back that, um, the area that they investigated was not, um, a good area for mustis, sawgrass rattlesnakes.
When did they learn about that requirement? And why didn't they know about it at the time that they gave us the scope of services?
So the scope of services was originally approved in October of twenty seventeen, if I recall correctly. Um, I I I can't speak to why they didn't know about it at that point, um, but I do know that, um, we we were informed that it had to be done by Smith Group in January of twenty eighteen, if I recall correctly. No, for twenty nineteen, this year.
So is that, is that when they gave us the price?
Yes.
No.
No. Um, we 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 didn't get a, I want to say we got a verbal price, but I I don't recall what date that was.
How about the bats? I mean, this is a new thing for this type of project, or is it-
So so but both of these were required for for tax. Um, and, uh, the area that they investigated for the bats, there there were a few trees that they found that were habitable or could have a future for bats.
So that just controls one that trees can be taken down.
Correct.
Okay, any further questions? Please call the vote with the second amendment. Have you approved the amendment?
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yep.
Keo?
No.
Uh, new business item L5, consideration of scope from OHM for Grand Street Reconstruction Design Services not to exceed forty-five thousand. So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Michelle, second by Knight, thank you. Is there any questions on this? This basic design services for Grand Street, right?
Basically, so, um, we are going to follow the same general, um, process that we used on Central. Um, we're pretty much at the same spot last year, um, where we want to, um, have topographic survey underway, actually took care of some of that when we did forestry, um, but there's a little more to come out there. Um, we will also, um, engage the public, um, at the probably called the thirty percent stage, um, to kind of talk about what impact look like on properties. Um, I'm not envisioning the walk that we did on Forestry. Um, we may have a little more formal, um, plan view type presentation where we can talk through, um, what it will look like in terms of impacts to property. Uh, and then we're also probably, um, just because some of the interest along the street, look at some options for green infrastructure. That really is going to be dependent on individual property owners, uh, the grade, uh, certainly a lot of challenges out on that site, um, how, uh, there's some cross-slope issue on Grand and then the actual running slope of Grand. Uh, but we're going to look at those those options and I think essentially kind of call out some of those, uh, what those look like with, you know, how those either are below ground or above ground. Uh, and then once we get through that, our hope is to really bid this locally in our November timeframe, and then our contractor, um, they will be starting after school, but we'll have that bid already on the books. Um, I think as we saw this year, sooner we can lock in bid prices back and then, so that's a little, I have no idea what that looks like before we can enter in here.
I did think the walkthrough on Forest was extremely successful.
It actually was, yeah.
So, yeah, if it comes to that, I think we should do that again if we need to.
Okay.
They're nice residents, aren't they?
They really were. Most of them were very friendly.
I think we actually talked to, I think, every household on that one where we were doing work. Um, I was just talking to Courtney because I had a a public meeting the night prior where we sent out nine hundred notices and two people showed up. And we, uh, you know, just just a matter of how different communities operate, and we were able to talk to everybody and got a little, a lot of really good feedback. Um, it's, I think it's always helpful when we can really talk about, you know, the front yard is kind of this this unwritten contract between the city and and the private property owner. You know, they maintain the right of way with mowing it and taking care of it. Uh, so being respectful when you come through with the public improvement, uh, I always think is a really good thing to do, and that was that was a good opportunity to kind of show that from the city's perspective.
Well said. Questions for Patrick or Zach? Please call the vote.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. New business item L6, discussion of draft ballot language for possible ballot questions for November fifth, two thousand nineteen election.
Got a couple of questions. Okay. On page two oh two, the sample, um, where it goes through listing all the different things, the fire hall facility, city offices, the sheriff's department. I was wondering if we should also include in there, we talked before about, like, in addition to the DPW.
So if I put in my memo, there's a difference between the notice of intent that we did for, um, referendums and this bond language. Bond Council really wants us to be as specific as possible, so unless we have a specific project identified or at least narrowed down, he really would prefer it stay as narrowly tailored as possible. That's why I was hesitant to throw in a fourth thing in here. Three was a lot for him to write in here.
Or should we, are you saying we could just give it general, just talk about, you know, city of Dexter facility?
No, it has to be specific.
Okay.
This has to be-
That's what I'm trying to figure out, which one has to-
The battle language has to be as specific as possible. Technically, it would be helpful, probably even more specific than this, but he was comfortable with this. It should be very project specific.
So why don't we have two?
We could have two, but I don't know what the breaking point would be of the two because we don't know where the sheriff's office is going.
Well, they could both include which facilities may include. Right?
It could.
Well, because it's not specific here either. I mean, this this isn't-
Right, I know, but it's-
That sentence doesn't tie the sheriff to one or the other in this paragraph.
Right, I know, so I guess it would have to be in both, which I don't know if people would feel like they were potentially voting for twice because if they voted yes for both, I don't know, it's just a little bit, it would be easier. I mean, I guess, yeah, I don't know. You guys tell me what you want us to say, and I will talk to Bond Council about what we should say.
This is my first opportunity to discuss it.
And then the next to the last sentence where it says, and attachments thereto.
Mm-hmm. That's just-
Should it end in a question mark or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it shallacity of Dexter?
It's a whole sentence.
It's a long question.
One long sentence.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, um, the dollars has the language not to exceed, so that would be our cap that we put in there, and I think we'd all, somewhere between the nine and ten million is what it's looking like for these two facilities, um, or what it could be for two facilities. For the last sentence, the estimated mileage to be levied, I guess my question for Bond Council is do we need to pair all that with up to or not to exceed whatever mills?
Whatever that is, is, um-
Because if if it does get approved as three mills, we don't have to do that. If it comes out that we only need-
Correct. We can't do it with this. We wouldn't be able to. It would be illegal. So it has to be only what we need to-
Right. I guess my question is, do we need to say up to this or not to exceed that?
That's why I think it's got to be estimated mileage to be levied.
Okay. And I'll just say-
Because it's basically whatever it is to cover that, regardless of how many mills it turns out to be.
And I will say again, uh-
Because you don't sell the bond until after this passes. So, you know, it's estimated at three, but if something were to happen and you sold ten million dollars worth of bonds and for some reason interest rate went crazy and it was three and a half, then it's three and a half. It's whatever it is to retire. You're basically voting the bond. That's how you look at it.
So the top, the top two minutes, you're working on it?
Correct.
Is there a reason to not split the issues?
In the session we had at the last meeting, we said we felt that it should be together because of both issues, but deal with the two issues that we've been discussing. Did we not have that discussion, we not put together? Clearly, we're going to have City Hall and the and the fire station together on the bond.
I mean, those are the two big things that we're trying to solve.
You're saying we're going to have them together?
They're going to be one bond.
Not just going. The bonding is together, but the building would be together.
But two would give voters a chance to vote on what they thought was important. If they thought both are important, they'd vote yes for both of them.
But we feel both are important, so.
We do, but we're asking the voters, so.
Well, I think this shows the voters what we think is important, is to solve these two issues.
And it isn't unheard of either because when the school does their bonds, they don't say athletic fields, facilities, and technology. They don't necessarily do one for athletic facility, one for buildings, one for tech.
I know what you can do on that, and is there a reason why we can't split them? To give people greater choice. That's my point.
You can split them, aren't you? No problem. I can have the language for the twelve, be both ways. Would you split the sheriff on both if I split them?
I think that's confusing.
I think that's a seat going to go one place or the other.
I don't care if it's just on one. I just think that the, I think that there's a, I think that there's potentially a limit on what people are going to want to spend. And giving them two allows them to decide that this is important and how much they want to spend. Whereas this ends up asking for an awful lot as one together. I mean, if if the community feels as strongly as the four of you that voted to buy the property, they'll vote for the fire station one with no problem. Now, whether they think they need a City Hall or not, wouldn't impact the fire station. But if the community doesn't feel that strongly, there's no sense of city offices getting affected by the fire station vote, or vice versa. Well, then I would see it more likely public safety passing as opposed to office. Maybe. And, y- yes, folks who've been in the fire station have seen that there are potential hazards to life and limit the folks there, which may not be as exciting in the office, but I, how many years has it been a temporary? Eighteen?
I'll be here nineteen years in December.
So I'm I'm comfortable-
Eighteen years, that's not broken, sorry.
I'm comfortable bundling them and explaining to folks why I think both of them are important, and it's it's not easy. It's it's part why we knock door to door and wanted to say, we're happy to try to lead.
Bring back both, both versions, you know, one and two.
I I'm not favored.
No, but we're not welcome to that.
I got it. At least I am not favored, bring it back. You said we'd be one ballot, and we stick together on what we feel we want, make that decision.
Do we have to vote on this twelve?
Yes, because it's due to the kind of the thirteen. It's our next meeting.
Right, that's the issue. I'd like to see both versions and think about it.
Haven't thought about that one?
No, definitely. I would throw a question out there if you- I would throw a question out there if you speak with Bon. If it turns out the city offices and the sheriff's department are in building three, and they're not physically connected, if one's around the corner from the other, would that have to be a third description on there? Or is because it's in the same building, it's considered the same facility? I don't know the answer to it. I just don't want us to get.
So. Repeat that question, please?
So one of the potential configurations was the portion of building three facing Broad Street could be City Hall, and the sheriff department on the side facing Forest Street. And my question to Bon Council would be, do we need to delineate that separately? Or is the fact that it's in the same building, even though we're not physically connected and within one space sharing a lobby or a common wall, even necessarily a separate facility? I think they'll interpret that and say, you could ask the question.
We haven't discussed the third option, and that is we're going to beat the present fire hall into City Hall, which sheriff could still stay there if we can have that desired.
Yeah, and I think this language allows for that.
So if I split it into two, where do I put the sheriff? Into both, or what are they?
I'll need two sheriff's offices.
I think.
And that's where it gets tricky, is now, it may work better for multiple.
I argue with, where?
The, the, the two versions, where you have two ballot proposals, you're going to have to have two of each of those. One, you know, one where the fire hall has sheriff with it, and one where the fire hall doesn't, in the same city office. One where they have it, and then when we vote, we, if we decide to just do one ballot proposal, then there's no, nothing to decide on that. But if we decide to go two, then we make a decision as to where we want the fire station, so. Bring all those options.
If it were me, I would keep police connected to the city offices.
Why is that so?
Because I think. I think it makes more sense, frankly.
Oh, you say it makes more sense, but you haven't agreed that, that's the reason you say that, doesn't it?
Well, I mean, so if you go with the eighty-one forty thing, I like the police officers right where they're at, right on Main Street. They're visible when you come into town. I think they're deterrent to a whole bunch of stuff that goes on. Speed, you name it. I like the visibility of it. I think that it's very common for police stations to be in city offices. I mean, if I think about some of the other communities and where their police offices, police stations are, there's a lot of administrative function. I stick to the logical space next to city offices. But that's just an opinion. I mean, it doesn't matter. From, from, from the perspective of splitting them up, it would also put a lower number to the fire station. Ballot language, because the fire, because the sheriff is what, 400,000 of that, or 800,000 of that? Or it's some number of that ridiculous 6.6 number. It would show a number, lower number over there anyway. So there's a, there's a pro for you.
I wish we, Frank, if this was ridiculous when we made these decisions, okay? Thank you for your opinion anyway. I think the idea together, I think you find more units of government put public safety together. And that makes more, more sense, in my opinion.
Yeah, typically that's when, you know, both units of the public safety are part of the local government.
I got that.
Okay. In our circumstance, neither one of the organizations are part of the local government.
But they, but the two units that are there contribute to each other. Their process, when there's a call coming in, and that, they have the same, that same process. They're receiving those calls and dealing with them. And so it makes, to me, sense to keep together if we possibly can. I'm not opposed to them not being there, but we'll have to work that all out in some different fashion.
Keep them where they are, put them next to the restrooms.
Cleanest restrooms of all county.
Other comments on the ballot language? Okay, new business item, L seven, discussion of the July thirty-one, two thousand nineteen town hall meeting on facilities. Okay, council comments?
Well, we.
Andrew? Oh. I didn't realize somebody had their hand up.
My, my comment was that we can take the process, price $590,000 off of being.
Did we, as far as the board, I would say, cut off stuff that doesn't apply anymore.
Okay, I brought them in, so if people wanted to look at them, you know, portions of them are still accurate, so.
Did we ever get the numbers from Mr. Gasson? His math, like, for example, the five point six. What share of that is for groundwork, which, what percentage of that is contingency, what's for?
Yeah, we have to break out what the map property.
Okay, do we have something for the city, or for the eighty-one forty? Because it shows 2.9 for city offices, and that seems very high compared to, for an extra 700,000, we're able to completely scrape the building down in terms of size.
I'll have to check. I took that number, because that was the updated number off the board. I don't know that I have that broken out.
Gasson's gonna hear.
How are we going to, who's going to make the presentation for this meeting? And since you've already got some sound for just property, is it, this is what we want to build, this is the property that we have? What's the?
Well, I have the summary of the actions that are currently under consideration, and for the fire station only being math, or city offices being thirty, forty-five broad and eighty-one forty. And then for the sheriff's office, math, thirty, forty-five broad, or eighty-one forty Main Street.
Are we talking about the public meeting?
Yeah.
Who will present?
We had talked about Sean doing it many, many meetings, a few meetings ago when we first started talking about it. Your staff can speak to the financial items of council laws, or Sean's perfectly capable of doing that as well. You know, I had some other thoughts in here about other conversation topics. And then the other thing, I guess, is the what we would want to see feedback on, on like a feedback form. If you want to have different village options based on the work we read it on what three miles equates to for the different neighborhoods. You know, I guess it's just a fun level of council looking for, isn't it, just ideas?
Are we asking the chief to come? At the last point meeting, you know, some people like being able to question the chief.
Right, if you would like to do that.
Definitely want the chief.
And the sheriff's department representative.
That's right. I remember now, you were talking about the sheriff's been.
Pre-grad?
Yep. They. I said, Sean said something about keeping the sheriff downtown. Was a research, one of them, when she spoke, that she indicated a preference for that, too.
What percentage of the time are they actually in the building? Not great.
Really owls in the building, most of the sergeants spend more time in the building than.
Okay, because that's good, because I, I.
Yeah, no, they do their report and everything, basically, with our.
I'm really excited to see three on the item there, as has been pointed out. The current fire station site and the current master plan calls for parks and recreation. As we're going into the new master plan, perhaps for planning commission rep and community development director, that the planning commission might want to consider that identifying that as a special planning area, which is basically a tag that says, this is a special spot, we're going to look at it more in depth, kind of like a corridor plan type of thing. Is our master plan, we went out for the seventy-three day notice, is that available on the site somewhere?
Yes. It's on the one site.
Okay.
Do you want me to send over?
No, let me sit back and find it. Let me try and find it.
You should be able to. It's not hard.
So, okay. I'll put this question out again. What do we want as a body and as individuals to know at the end of this meeting that we don't know currently?
I want to know that we've given public an opportunity to hear where we are in the process. And one of my comments was going to be in the opening remarks or somewhere in here, I'd like to see a very clear succinct statement of recent actions council has taken. So if anyone cares to attend, they can become fully informed of the actions that have been taken and the direction the council is heading. That's what I'd like.
And may I may ask that question with some people's opposition to that, how do you feel that is going to be illuminated to the public? Or will there be? I guess it's a general question, okay? We've got four, four to three vote, we know that, okay? We've got suggested that the mayor's going to make the presentation. Should it be somebody else make the presentation?
I don't care who makes the presentation. I just want to make sure people know the direction we're heading, because clearly at the last meeting, at the last meeting, one of the themes that I heard in some of the feedback was that people want to know where we're going with this and what council is doing. And that's all I'm saying is we want, I want to make sure that, you know, if people want to stay home and not pay attention to what's going on, that's fine. That's their prerogative. But if people are interested in this issue and want to attend this meeting or advertising it, I would like to make sure that they go, they leave with a clear understanding of what we've done and where we're headed.
I agree with.
With the timetable, we have.
We had them.
And a minimum of history.
Yeah. Well, that's why I tried to. Yep.
You want a forty minutes of history?
You're at the opening remarks section and the options under consideration where we can talk about what's been done towards those ends. You know, it's a limited menu of things currently under consideration, I guess, is my point.
There had been discussion at some point of having Megan Mason Minock potentially moderating. Something is, have we ever talked with her about that?
I'm sorry?
We discussed, or had been floated spaghetti thrown on the wall, potentially Megan Mason Minock who's working for the city with the master plan potentially being the emcee. Has that been discussed with her?
No, it was floated to council, council gives staff direction to do what's unknown, we have.
Thank you.
Are there any other points you would like?
I think that'd be, that'd be a time that council members can also speak, in the same way here, that we're listed as such.
Or to answer questions.
What's that?
Or for council members to answer questions.
Correct.
I know that that was number five, but I could say, you know, council comments.
So will we see a revised copy of what the suggestion of the plea, the plea said? Our chief is in here, will we see a revised process that we could see before the meeting?
Well, you had said about inviting them to the meeting.
By what?
Right, you said to invite them to the meeting, yeah. And I can update this agenda with the information on council making comments.
All right.
I mean, as we get questions from the audience, there's no problem with council and the fire chief participating in that, providing the answers to those questions.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a formal.
I mean, I think that's what people wanted, was more conversational, asking questions.
I think you're right.
Exchange.
Right. So that's why I tried to keep it fairly brief of summarizing where we're at. And I think it also, the other thing people wanted was more of the cost and the literal cost, so trying to focus on that, you know.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think if it turns out to be more question and answer, it does.
Imagine if you'd be comfortable running this meeting, there's a lot of talk about financing part, and you do that pretty well.
I mean, I can cover the funding options portion, that's fine.
Who do you guys want running the meeting? Who do you want running the meeting? Well, you don't want me running the meeting?
Madge, would you want one of the four running it in your place? There's not a lot of trust right now between the four and the three. And, you know, it's difficult for me to imagine Supreme Court sending one of the dissenting justices out there to describe major decision the court has made. And so I'm trying to.
Did I open the last meeting, okay?
Yeah, this is, this is the whole meeting. I'm.
Well, no, but I mean, it's not hard to facilitate questions and answers.
Yeah, I was just trying to throw a bunch of spaghetti out there so that our scabs can start cheering. So that we don't have to mistrust each other or any of that stuff. And though an outside party might be useful for that, the last time we did it, it kind of went sideways in the tree.
We're upside we.
And I don't know that anyone else from outside would have as good a grasp of this as someone inside. So I'm just throwing spaghetti on the wall so that we can all start to trust in, in that type of thing.
Well, that takes actions to show the trust. By both sides, right?
Yeah.
Well, you have up until the thirtieth to decide whether you want me to open the meeting or not.
I, I'll tell you what, I don't need you to have Sean run the meeting, okay? As long as I have opportunity to speak during the meeting.
Every meeting I've ever been at, you've had an opportunity to speak.
And that's all I'm asking. You know, I, I go along with Zach has said about, you know, the process that of leaving our disagreements. You know, yours out there many times, then your notes, your reports to the council, the city. And they're well known. And that being said, some of the restaurants feel ours is not as well. We don't have that form. We don't, we don't have that, that pulpit to do that. So I think there is some.
Do you have the same opportunities I do?
I know, but it's not the same charm you're allowed to get that. I guess my last comment on this is that there is. I guess, my last comment on this is that there is, there was a meeting, and I've always been six meetings ago, when we had that open meeting, and people spoke. And there was some kind of a tally, very subjective one way or the other. We've had letters on both sides. And yet in six meetings, we have not had one person come here and talk about their. And I don't know if it's the same thing, in my opinion, as I've said many, many times, after a budget hearing. You've heard me say it more than once. People either don't care, or they think we're doing a good job. They don't show up for budget hearings. I mean, I think I could count on one finger, people have ever shown up for a budget hearing, period, and discussed anything about our budgets over the years. And I've been here, been on a long time. Somebody thinks different, you can count it. You're not, and I'm not so sure that when we got done with that meeting, that I heard something that maybe other people haven't heard, and there's, just make the decision and let us know what it is. It's your job, you were elected to do this, do it. You've been touring around long enough, get it done.
Mayor Cube, we be able to watch the two hour presentation from Mr. Noel between that time and this meeting?
No.
Well, it's going to be recorded.
Oh.
We have the ability to record it.
Is that correct?
It's unlikely that I'll be able to watch it between the evening of the twenty-ninth and the evening of the thirty-first. Do I need to be taking points from that?
No. Because we talked about that last time, that the, and what we're looking to get out of the consult is not the issues that we're, you know, communicating with the public.
But there could be facts that came out, or information that came out that would be beneficial.
Well, then you. It's more for our education.
Right.
I'm sure if there's something that you find fascinating, you'll mention it.
And even if it's not fascinating.
Well, maybe even not fascinating. Right.
And where, where are we again, with the library?
Detroit, Michigan is in the eastern time zone.
And I've heard a lot of debate.
What debate?
Debate is this.
Oh, is it? Okay, so do we have any more discussion on the Town Hall meeting?
It's got a plan.
Okay, how have we advertised the Town Hall meeting? Just from our.
On a website, Facebook, email, I think.
Website, Facebook, email. Okay, council comments this evening? You getting with Lisa Bell, you ready?
No, I'm ready.
Nothing, okay. Mr. Cousins?
I was happy to be here.
Mr. Bell?
Oh, come on.
Ms. Jones?
I discovered something, uh, last week at the museum, we got a couple of deeds in, and property that Millennium Place is, is, you know, going to put up their project on. We have the deed where Judge Dexter sold it to whoever S T. Morris back in eighteen fifty-eight and eighteen fifty-nine. And it's, it's kind of neat to see these old things.
I did find a couple of original deeds, trying to redo that.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
It's very difficult. The one, though, I'm not exactly sure what plot it is. We're going to have to look through it really quickly.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
It's very difficult.
It's like, really. Yeah, it was kind of, it was going to need to have that in our possession.
I was able, I never got the email from the lady that was sending it. I was able to go through, watch off the record.
Well, yeah. I don't.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Bell?
At the last firework meeting, heard that there's some issues with the fireworks ordinance. And a lot, where our law enforcement allies did, like we did, where we said, you know, we'll follow the state law. And I guess what the state really did was basically, in their ordinance says you can do fireworks anytime. And if municipalities want to, they can specify certain dates. And they state with the dates that you can allow, that you have to allow people to do fireworks on those specific dates. You just referred to the state ordinance as, you know, saying, well, follow whatever the state ordinance is. Well, the state ordinance is you can use fireworks anytime.
I don't think that's what we approved.
Right, well, we just referred to the, anyway, let me shorten this up.
Yeah.
Okay.
The chief has brought that to our, my and Sean's attention, and we will look into it.
So, yeah, that's what I was just going to ask. That's, we just reviewed that situation, and then, you know, if we need to bring it back and do another public hearing or whatever to adjust that, then we will.
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to bring out. Thank you.
Ms. Bell? According to Instagram, if you need some exercise, I believe on Wednesday nights, the field hockey team has co-ed type things out there at Alarette. Or no, that might actually about at the field. So look them up on Instagram if you want some interesting exercise. It's a really weird, intense thing, give it a try. Two transportation things. For those of you who haven't seen, the RTA Regional Transportation Authority Plan actually lists commuter rail from Detroit to Ann Arbor and Chelsea in their plan. Not in their fifty, hundred year wild plan, but in an actual, if we get our mileage approved in the next couple of years, it might kind of happen. So that's very exciting. One last transportation thing. CAPDART is working with Representative Lazinski to do kind of a transportation summit event in October. One of the goals of CAPDART is to try to get some ideas from the constituent communities of projects that are important for us, especially across borders. So perhaps, the thing that Mr. McNally has brought up on Maine, Island Lake, Dexter, Chelsea type of thing. The idea is that at this summit, we kind of, we all have things that people can point to on the board, like, this is super important, or don't do that, when instead of just, what do you want? And you kind of sit there. So I'll be getting something in for us to have that discussion next month so that we can be prepared for that meeting in October. That's it.
Thank you. Andrew comments? Okay, we're back around and not arranged. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any topic?
I mean, I just would, if I could just reflect the city manager's earlier comments about, you know, the trash situation. I would just say that she indicated there were only four calls. And I know that, as I said, from the next door out, there are more than four people who have indicated that this is an issue. And also it indicate that, you know, you had mentioned, if I understood correctly, that the option for a thirty-five gallon totter was a dollar per resident or a dollar per household.
Per household.
Per household, per month, per year. And using the city figures, that equates out to be about seven thousand dollars a year. And I would argue that that is, I'd be curious what the cost is to flood the ice rink for, and I'm using the seven, to flood the ice rink once a year that goes unused for a majority of the year, relative to an expenditure of seven thousand dollars to give people the option to, you know, be more conservative in their trash versus have an ice rink that fewer than maybe a quarter of the population uses. We're looking for a funding model to supply that option.
Right, yeah.
So I, so my point.
Way more households than that.
Well, if you take the households and you take the existing households divided by the, let's say, a forty percent acceptance rate, that gets.
No, it would be for everyone, regardless of.
Okay, so if you said that, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year then. And so I would argue, I would still say that that's a reasonable fee to accommodate a choice or to build into a, you know, to a plan to allow people a little bit more choice. So I would just recommend that that be addressed. Because I really do continue to feel that, you know, I heard, I'm sure, indicate, she can't utilize the trash bin that she has, so.
She can, she just will some of it, she can also buy her own.
And as I mentioned to you, the individual from the trash company's response was, if I break it, or when I break it, which sounded fairly adversarial, he would replace it with a ninety-six gallon trash bin. So it doesn't really seem to be an inviting alternative. I just, as I said, my feedback just remains the same. I don't think that this is a, a well thought out plan for the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments this evening? Okay, uh, seek a motion for a chairman, please.
Someone.
Mark Smith. Second for mayor, all of his favor. Good evening, everyone.